Kate McKinney.
Here.
Deb Olson.
Here.
Eric Birch.
Here.
Marcia Scherz.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll be moving on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Just, I know that we're streaming this, could you just tell people what the consent agenda is out there?
Sure.
If they don't know.
Sure, so consent agenda contains the Board of Admins from our regular board meeting on August 19th, as well as our Board minutes from the Committee of the Whole, which will review in a little bit for the board reports, as well as our vouchers, which are looked over and by consensus brought to this meeting for approval. Did you want to go into any more detail, Robert?
No, I just wanted you to make that announcement, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Alright, um, all those in favor to approve the consent agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item three, the informational session. So here's what I'll kind of summarize our Committee of the Whole minutes from last week. We had, um, three sections of community and staff recognition, or community members. Um, we recognized Frank Rich, Ryan Predney, Joe and Joan Fitzgerald for their volunteering, um, their time and service to repair and paint the middle school caboose. We very much appreciate that. Um, she, Mrs. Grindell recognized our buildings and ground staff for their, um, tremendous work over the summer months and the beginning of the school year to get everything up and running in a tip-top shape. And we also recognized Paul Johnson for achieving Level Two as a WASB member recognition program for board members, thank you. We'll be, then we had an update on the referendum. And we'll have another one this evening. We had a Relay for Life presentation, um, where the team that participated in our Relay for Life raised $2,617 this year, which is a great accomplishment, and we appreciate their work and effort in doing that. Um, we also reviewed the Northwest Iceman Co-op Agreement, um, and discussed how that came to be, and how the process for coming to the board on last week and tonight. It was by consensus moved to this meeting this evening to be voted on. We reviewed the Superintendent, Director of Operations, Principal, Director of People's Services, Director of Technology and Athletic Director job descriptions. Those were brought forward tonight. We had a discussion on the high school boiler. Again, that's brought forward for a decision tonight. Um, consider the line of credit renewal, which will be decided upon tonight. That's a yearly thing, the annual thing that we've been doing, um, for the last number of years. We reviewed the unusually hazardous transportation plan, which was caught in the audit by DPI, so that's brought tonight. Um, we also had information on lunch prices, that they've been increased 10 cents per meal. And we'll be awaiting at the next Committee of the Whole sort of a plan on how we're going to approach the 30, 60, 90 day planning cycle. And then we had a financial update by Mrs. Grindell. Did anyone have anything else to add on the summarizing of the Committee of the Whole? Okay, thank you. We'll be moving on to community comments.
Wow, that's loud.
Thanks, okay. Alright. Per statute 19.3 parent two and 19.84 parent two, the board will allow public comments. The community comment section, session will be limited to 45 minutes. The time for each individual will be divided by the number of people signed up for community comments. Tonight there are two. We'll see how long you take. Um, the community comments section of the meeting agenda provides members of the community with the chance to speak directly to the school board. It is a valuable opportunity for community members to have questions, concerns, requests, and ideas heard directly by the school board and administration. Participants are asked to keep, I'm sorry, asked to step up to the microphones that everyone is able to hear when you speak. Providing your contact information and the community concern signup sheet helps us follow up with you on your concerns. Alright, the first is signed up is Carrie Romses, um, from Shell Lake.
Thank you President Birch, I think I'm speaking into this well enough. Uh, my name is Carrie Romses, I am the president of the Spooner Area Youth Association, Hockey Association, and so I wanted to come and introduce myself especially to the new board members, and also thank you for serving on the board, and thanks to the former members for serving on the board and doing such a wonderful job. I know it takes a lot of your time, as do most community activities, so thank you so much. Um, I'm here tonight just to update you briefly, um, not a lot happens for hockey in the summer, but a few things have happened. We're always out in the community during the summer, working on volunteer things where we can make money to continue our programs, because as, if you recall, we do give free equipment to all of our participants, especially at the lower levels. We, um, uh, did outfit almost 70 skaters last year with totally free equipment so they could try hockey or try skating. We also do maintain the ice rink up at the community park, so that all community members can use that. So we were out doing some activities like that. We've also opened registration last week, and we've already seen a lot of registration coming in. So hockey is, is here and still going on in Spooner, and we're excited. Um, as you noted, I am from Shell Lake, and just to make a quick note for those of you who may not know that, that the Youth Association does encompass Shell Lake, Spooner, and Minong. So that's why I'm here and speaking with you today. Um, I did send out some information to all the board members via email, so I know that you have gotten that. Just publicly, I'd like to say thank you again to the administration for looking at the co-op and sitting down with everyone in the co-op. And a couple of comments to that. Um, it looks like the numbers that, the agreement that you're voting on tonight, it looks like the numbers, at least to us and what we presented last year and our research that we did last year, that those numbers are pretty high, to have 65 to go out of the co-op, or 30 from each school, that that's pretty, that would be pretty difficult to meet. So I want you to know that how we're taking this agreement would be that for three years, you wouldn't be looking at going out of the co-op. And then after that, um, if this agreement would continue to stand, it looks like it's three years, but if it would continue to stand, that would be pretty unobtainable for any school, not just for Spooner, but any school in the state of Wisconsin, to be able to get to that. The other thing I'd like to comment on is that the agreement looks pretty thorough. I can see that you spent some definite time on that, but there isn't anything in that agreement about sharing any of the responsibilities for being the lead in the co-op, or where the games would be played, or how the other schools that aren't in Barron would be able to see these high school players. That's the piece that's missing for us with the Youth Association right now. Our players don't often have contact with the Northwest Iceman Co-op kids, and that's something that we'll work on improving also, but at this point, we really don't have any, so we don't have anything for our kids to look up to as far as high school goes. So if you ever have any questions, please reach out to me or anyone on the board of our association. We look forward to meeting with you guys and talking with you in November.
Thank you Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Curtis Cuttsworth is signed up next from Barron. Nothing to say, okay, thank you. Alright. We'll be moving on to our discussion and action portion of the meeting. Item A is personnel recommendations.
Three resignations or retirements before you this evening. Julie Glassing, uh, looking to retire effective October 4th, 2019, from the Food Service Department, 29 years of service. Toni Burns, elementary special education teacher, one year of service. Chris Brimblecombe, again a retirement from the Food Service Department, 23 years of service.
First, I'll entertain a motion to accept these resignations and retirements.
I make that motion, that we accept these resignations and retirements, and thank, thanking them for their service to our, our school and community.
I will second that.
Thank you. And yes, it's a combined over 50 years of service, which is pretty remarkable, and we very much appreciate your dedication to our district, so round of applause for these employees. We didn't vote? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, a number of hiring, hiring recommendations this evening. Ashley Kraus, food service, this is a split position, replacing Gerald Boyce, recommended by Mrs. Grindell. Sherry Hefty, food service, again a split position, replacing Gerald Boyce, Mrs. Grindell recommending. Quentin Mendenhall, middle school football coach, that was a vacant position, Mr. Lucius recommending. Jessica Bambanek, interim varsity volleyball coach, replacing Ryan Dietrich, recommended by Mr. Lucius. BJ Wilson, interim JV volleyball coach, replacing Jessica Bambanek, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Paige Meyer, interim C-Team volleyball coach, replacing Diana Moss, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Kristen Barnes, occupational therapist, pending her board certification, Department of Public Instruction licensure and State of Wisconsin licensure, replacing Shawna Wallace, that which, uh, who provided a contracted service to the district, recommended by Mr. Ham. Deb Cromer, Spooner Elementary School art teacher, an LTE position, replacing Sarah Gilbert, recommended by Mr. Hopke. Sherry Was, Waslawski, elementary special ed teacher, an LTS position, replacing Toni Burns, pending the approval of Mrs. Burns resignation, recommended by Mr. Ham. Amanda Sutherland, special education paraprofessional, and this is an increase from part-time to full-time, as our plan from last spring. Uh, executing that. Replacing Gillian Gaffer, uh, who was a full-time LTS at the end of last year, Mr. Ham recommending. Connie Hubner, part-time special ed paraprofessional, replacing Elizabeth Nielsen, was a long-term sub, Mr. Ham recommending. Chantrelle Barrett, part-time special ed paraprofessional, uh, filling, rounding out, uh, Julie Salt's current hours, Mr. Ham recommending. Tammy Dammer, part-time special ed paraprofessional, filling out Amanda Sutherland's current hours, Mr. Ham recommending.
I'll entertain a motion to approve these hirings.
I make a motion that we approve these hirings.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? I did have just one question. Um, why? Why are we approving full-time positions now, instead of in the spring or before? Why so late approaching the year?
Kids move in that had one-on-one per, per.
Thank you.
Some kids move into the district that had one-on-one paraprofessional needs. So our schedule is constantly always changing based on kids moving in and out, and it could change again next month based on, on those kids moving in and out.
So we may not have needed the full-time positions?
No, we needed them.
We needed them regardless.
Specific for certain kids that came into our district.
I'm, I guess what I'm saying is we approved to move towards some full-time positions in the spring, and then were we holding off to see if the need was there for full-time before?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And originally, there wasn't the need.
Okay, that's what I was verifying, okay.
Follow-up, now, did we budget for this a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
So, it's not going to elevate anything?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor to approve these hirings? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, that was a long list, Dr. Eslin. Alright, we're moving on to item B, acceptance of donations.
Number of donations before you this evening. Donation from Donors Choose to the Spooner Middle School Music Program, 10 mini keyboards valued at $425.85. An anonymous donation going to food service accounts, $1,000. A donation from Nicole Janzen Duncan to Spooner Elementary School, 600 pencils to support learning. A donation from Northwest Wisconsin Volleyball Club to the Spooner Volleyball Program, $1,323.70, as well as a hit stick valued at $40. From the Spooner Wesleyan VBS to the Spooner Elementary School, $245 worth of shoes, which are 21 pairs of shoes.
Wow.
I'll entertain a motion to approve these donations.
I make a motion that we approve these donations, along with the gratitude of continued support from this community to all the various schools and buildings. It's, always amazes me to see this report. It's a great testament to our community, so, thank you.
I second, thank you. Any more discussion? I think we all agree with Nathaniel, thank you for putting that so well. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. We'll be moving on to item C, which is a fundraiser reserve request.
Two fundraiser requests coming before you this evening. One from Mr. Thornley for the, the Spooner High School Drama Club, seeking to solicit donations via a request letter, which is attached to your agendas, and, uh, the funds are used to, uh, to produce and, and present the 2019, 20 drama productions, and, uh, excess funds would be used for Drama Club student scholarship monies, and a field trip to see a professional theater production. Second one, coming from the FFA, uh, FFA, seeking to do their citrus, citrus fruit sale and sorushi chocolate bar sale, uh, looking to raise funds for leadership workshops and conferences, career development events, leadership development events, community service events, recreational activities, and scholarships.
Thank you, and I'll entertain a motion to approve these fundraiser requests.
I make a motion that we accept or approve these fundraiser requests for the Drama Club and FFA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item E, the referendum, I'm sorry. There are no facility use requests for out-of-district and for-profit organizations, so we'll be moving on to item E, referendum update.
Two community walkthroughs were conducted last week, Tuesday, September 10th, at the Spooner Middle School, Thursday, September 12th, at the Spooner Elementary School. Um, we had 10 people attend the Spooner Middle School event, and five attended the elementary school event. Lots of good questions asked by people from the community and, and some good discussion. The, uh, the walkthroughs provided people that attended an opportunity to get a firsthand look at the school buildings, to learn more about the proposed referendum project, and to ask any questions or share any insights that they had. The district website has been updated, and on the district portion, there's now a, a section that you, uh, you can access, proposed referendum information. And, uh, with that, uh, within the next couple of days, we'll, we'll be posting the videos of the two community walkthrough sessions, also providing some background information on the referendum. I would encourage anyone who's interested to refer to that website periodically, because it will be updated with things such as frequently asked questions and revised plans and things of that nature. Last item for this evening on the referendum update, the school perceptions survey. The community survey will be coming out the first week of October, and, uh, we'll be releasing some information in advance of that to, uh, try to encourage everyone who's a resident of the district to take the survey and provide that valuable feedback.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions or anything else to add? Alright. We'll be moving on to item F, to consider the Northwest Iceman Co-op Agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. To approve.
I'll second. Any discussion?
The only, oh, excuse me, the only thing I have a question on is, we had talked about the annual meeting that there, that is, they're going to have at the end of each co-op year, is that correct? And that they will have a chance to discuss any items as far as, you know, different host schools and things like that, opportunities, is that right?
That's correct, as presented at the Committee of the Whole last week, within that agreement, uh, which is available, uh, on the district website under the Board Doc section, for those that would like to review it. Uh, there's a provision in it for, um, a meeting each year following the, the season, and that would be the time where revisions to the agreement would be proposed and move forward.
Now revisions to the, to the agreement, does that include the possibility of negating the agreement, for example, and doing what the other hockey organization would want? Would that preclude that? Or would that?
No.
It would not preclude that? So that's still uh, a possibility for the community if that's what they so desire at a later juncture? Is that correct?
It, it, it would be an item of discussion, and it would not be precluded from changing that portion of the agreement in the future. Thank you.
I, uh, I wasn't here at the, the last meeting, but I think my only concern, which I, I asked some questions, is the numbers as a prerequisite. Uh, I thought, my opinion is, and I'm not a hockey guy, I'm a wrestling guy, is that those numbers have never been here for the entire history of Spooner, as far as I know, I could be wrong. And so that was my only concern, but the way I understand it in asking questions is that if we get numbers that are a lot higher, then we can start having that conversation, obviously, we have this three, whatever this agreement is, but then that would be part of that conversation, is, is that correct?
Yes.
So, just wanted to state the concerns that I had, the concerns that I asked, for the record, and, yep.
Any further discussion?
I, I'm gonna only say that I think that the, I respect the superintendents from each one of these schools, as well as their athletic directors, that have all had this discussion before we had the discussion, and I think it maybe could evolve to something, it might change, but I, I see nothing really that contractually that holds us to any of this, other than the fact that it seems more like a gentleman's agreement. There's no financial penalty if you were to withdraw and say, I don't want to be part of this anymore. It's a gentleman's agreement, excuse me, and it'll be interesting to see if our concerns that we're having right now, the other boards from those other districts have the same concerns, and maybe if they do, at that annual meeting, this could be changed. But we're just one of the schools in this agreement, and how the rest of them feel would maybe give the co-op some guidance on what they should do in the future also, but I don't see anything in here that makes us a financial commitment to the Spooner School District. But I'd like to hear some feedback from the other schools also, what they did in their board meetings, but that's why I'd like to approve it and go.
Alright, anyone else? We're gonna have a roll call vote on this?
Robert Holland?
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes.
Kate McKinney?
Yes.
Deb Olson?
Yes.
Eric Birch?
Yes.
Marcia Scherz? Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll be moving on to item G, to consider the Superintendent, Director of Operations, Principal, Director of People's Services, Director of Technology and Athletic Director job descriptions. Another round of job descriptions that are coming before us. I'll make the motion that we approve these job descriptions, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, we'll be moving on to item H, which is to consider the SHS boiler contingencies.
Everybody received the update, I'm assuming, from me this morning regarding, yeah, the questions that were asked last week at the Cow. So, um, if there are any other questions, I can answer them now, otherwise the administrative recommendation is to go the repair route for the heat exchange slash boiler.
And just to reiterate, for those who were not at the Cow meeting and do not have these access to what we see in our board documents, what's the difference in cost between the repair job and a new, uh, system? For the, for the high school?
$50,000.
A new, uh, new system would be $75,000, and the repair has a range of up to $30,000, depending on how.
Uh, about $30,000?
Correct.
And the new boiler would be a 10-year warranty for, is that correct?
Correct, on the parts.
And the, uh, repair would be, can you tell us what that warranty would be?
Well, the, the warranty, if work is done and, uh, something were to go wrong due to the fault of the installation by the company, there would be a warranty on that. However, if the work is done, and in two years, the, we're in the same spot where it's just, um, had its useful life and it's wore out, or something else has gone wrong, there's not warranty on that. Um, and then there is a warranty on, a small warranty on the parts for the, the repair. A five-year warranty, yep, five-year warranty on the.
So, what would be the general warranty on the, on the, uh, repairs, is it gonna last, I mean, do they give you any warranty at all?
No, they're not gonna warranty a repair unless it's of their, you know, it's.
It's five years for the part.
Right, but if there's, if, if it's due to a fault of theirs for installation, then yes, they would come back and fix it, but if it's just because it's, they're not gonna tell you, we're gonna guarantee this for five years, they're just not gonna do that, it's gonna be, um, only if it's tied back to something that, that we can prove was for their installation work.
Okay, but right now, the administration believes that that would be better than a new one?
Correct.
I make a motion that we go with the recommendation for the repair.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We're going to do a roll call vote on this one as well.
Robert Holland?
Repair.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes, to the repair.
Kate McKinney?
Yes.
Deb Olson?
Yes.
Eric Birch?
Yes.
Marcia Scherz? Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, we'll be moving on to item I, which is to consider the line of credit renewal. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the line of credit renewal, as we have done for the last how many years?
Five.
Five years.
I'm sure, longer than that.
Probably.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote on this as well.
Robert Holland?
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes.
Kate McKinney?
Yes.
Deb Olson?
Yes.
Eric Birch?
Yes.
Marcia Scherz? Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Item J. Item J is to consider updates to the unusually hazardous transportation plan. I'll entertain a motion to approve these updates.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is this something we need to approve or not approve? I think it was just to present to the board, wasn't it?
I thought so, but.
No, yeah, we need your approval to move forward on it, to go ahead and update it.
All right.
Were there any changes?
We haven't started.
This is, we're approving to then make changes. We asked this at the committee.
Can someone just briefly summarize what is this? Anyone listening, watching this has got to be talking, like, what are they talking about?
Yeah, we had to look it up, too. So the district receives funds for our transportation costs, and those funds are staggered by how many children we have living between zero and two miles, and I believe there's different tiers, and they go out. And the zero to two miles within the district is considered the hazardous part, part of transportation, and you receive your highest reimbursement for that. When we were audited this year, one of the testing that they, one of the tests that they did was with our transportation monies that we received, and they wanted to see the, is it unusually high, or the UHT plan? And we didn't have it on file. They do have it on file at DPI, but it was in 2007 that it was last updated, so, you know, we decided at this time, it's probably a good idea to take a look at it and update it, and then get it back down to DPI, so that they can have it on file.
So that's essentially it? It's nothing, there's nothing hazardous in these buses or anything? I mean, that's the craziest.
No, and the reason why they, the reason why they called it hazardous, because usually that's where you have the most traffic, you have railroad tracks.
Okay.
There's sidewalks involved, and that's, you know, it's just considered, probably not the greatest name, but.
Okay.
Well, and does DPI mandate, or how, what proximity to schools? So can you pick up within two miles of proximity if, is that?
DPI sets the, so DPI says it's zero to, no, they don't tell us how far we have to go to pick up. But for the reimbursement process, that's how it's set up. Yep, so they don't tell you, you know, you have to be two miles away in order to pick up. It's, the tiers are set by, that's how you get reimbursed.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item K is the second reading of Neola Policy Updates, volume eight, number two. I'll entertain a motion to approve these updates.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Neola policy update. This would be the second reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That is the end of our agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.